Hi, everybody, and thanks for being here tonight. We really appreciate everybody taking some time to join us for the second public hearing for the Little Cottonwood Draft EIS. I'm Bree Benaboose with the Communications and Public Involvement portion of the EIS project team, and I'll be helping with moderating the meeting this evening along with several other of our team members from the Public Involvement Group. And you'll see their names just identified as LCC EIS team if you have, you know, any technical difficulties and need to reach out to someone. So I'd like to take a minute to introduce some key members of the project team before we get rolling too far. And they'll be joining us tonight. Josh Vanjura is UDOT's Project Manager who is overseeing the Little Cottonwood EIS. Hello, Josh. Carissa Watanabe is UDOT's Environmental Manager for this project. And finally, Vince Izzo is the Consultant Project Manager assisting Josh with managing the EIS. So Josh, Carissa, and Vince are all really heavily involved in the project and are down in the trenches with me, reading, listening, and responding to all the comments that are provided throughout the Draft EIS public comment period. So I know we'll try to keep this rolling as, as quick as we could. And before we jump into the presentation in the hearing, I'd like to review the participation guidelines very quickly, just to give everybody an idea of what to expect this evening and how comments will be accepted. So for those of you who may have tuned in last week, this meeting format will be very similar to what we did for the in-person public hearing. So Josh will be giving an overview of the Draft EIS, but the, but I just want to remind everybody that, just like last week, the project team will not be responding to questions and comments this evening. All of UDOT's responses to the comments will be included in the final EIS when that's published. And so, as you probably noticed when you joined, the presentation and the hearing are being recorded as part of the project record, and those will be available to view on the project website. So this meeting is also being livestreamed to the UDOT LCC EIS Facebook group if you somehow become disconnected from the webinar. And we do want to remind everybody that comments that are made publicly through online tools, so, you know, virtual meetings like this, do need to follow UDOT's Social Media Policy Participant Code of Conduct, sorry. And comments that are unacceptable under that policy might be removed at the admin's discretion, so that would be the project team. And Alyssa will be putting a link in the chat for you to review if you have any questions. And it's important to note that only panelists and registered commenters will be allowed to speak when they're called. All other attendees are going to be muted unless it's your turn to speak. And the other important part of this is if your Zoom screen name does not match the registration name that you provided, but you'd still like to comment, please make sure to message Alyssa LCC EIS Team 2 to inform her of your Zoom name and registration name, so that way we can kind of cross-reference and make sure we can identify you a little easier. And to also help prepare and kind of get everybody ready so we can be smooth with our transitions, a link to the speaker list for the people who have already registered in advance is going to be posted in the chat box, and that will take you to a Google Doc. And that'll give folks an idea of when you'll be called to speak, you know, time permitting, so we can get through as many people as possible tonight. So as we committed to at the previous meeting, and as you've seen in the participant guides, if you've taken a look at those that we've been posting on the website, speaker priority will be given to those who registered to speak on July 13th, but were unable to do so. And, you know, as we've mentioned in the previous meeting and in some of our email and social media updates, please do keep in mind that registering to speak doesn't guarantee speaking time. We are going to make absolutely every effort to get through as many speakers as possible in the time allotted. So that's where it's really important that everybody does keep to that three-minute time limit that we're asking you to follow. And for those of you who may have registered more than once, you know, probably just to confirm that you did register, you will only be allotted one three-minute session, so that way we can make sure to hear from as many people as we possibly can this evening. So, speaking, when it's your turn to speak, your name will be called along with two other following speakers to help prepare for a little bit of a quicker transition. So it'll essentially be speaker first person up, followed by so-and-so and so-and-so. And the important part of this, and that's why we're asking about your Zoom name as well as your registration name, is we do have a court reporter with us this evening. She's on the panel, and she'll be transcribing the comments during the meeting. So when you're called, please say your name before you start making your comment. That'll help ensure that she identifies the correct comments to the speakers. So when your name is called, please make sure to click the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen to identify yourself. And a host, probably Tyson, will temporarily promote you to be the first speaker, I should say, to be a panelist. And the other two speakers should just remain with their hands raised until they're called, when the speakers ahead of them are finished. And for those of you that might be listening in from a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. So during the time that you've been promoted to a panelist temporarily to speak, your Zoom meeting will minimize, but then reopen since you'll be kind of having a new status. And speakers who wish to turn on their own video once they've been made a panelist, if you want folks to see who you are when you're commenting, similar to like at the other hearing, you absolutely have that option too, but we don't require it. And once you're done speaking, then your status will be changed back to an attendee, and you'll be able to rejoin the meeting that way. And just to try to help get through the large group of speakers that we have tonight, if you saw the list, I think we've got around 70 folks. We do ask that if you could be ready to speak within 15 seconds of being called, that would be really helpful. So we're just hoping for everybody to take a little bit to make sure you're familiar with how to turn on your video and where the Raise Hand button is. And just as much as we can, try to keep to that time limit, because we do want to make sure we can hear from, just as, the whole list would be perfect, but really as many as we can. And just on a side note, you know, the participants at the July 13th meeting were really respectful of each other and all the differing viewpoints that we heard. So it was such a great experience that we again ask that all speakers continue to be respectful of the group and the project team. So attendees that do have comments that include, you know, foul language, threats, obscenities, really anything that kind of violates those social media code of conduct rules that was posted earlier, we may ask you to leave the hearing just out of respect for the group, but I don't think that's going to be a problem, because people were amazing last time, and it was really appreciated. And this is just kind of my last final reminder, last final, that's funny, huh? To remind everybody that the comments made, you know, they won't be responded to, but they are going to be documented, both, you know, here throughout the comment period, and responses will be provided. And another really key point that myself and the project team just want to remind folks of is that all the comments received through the formal channels are being viewed equally. And so verbal comments made during either of the meetings aren't being given preference in the final EIS. So the other ways that we are inviting folks to provide their input throughout the project, and I just also want to kind of make it, put that out there, that even if you do comment tonight, or if you commented last week, or you sent in a comment this morning, but you changed your mind after hearing Josh speak, there's no limit to how many comments you can submit. It's just that tonight, we are limited to one per person. So if you'd like to, and we hope you will, continue to submit comments throughout the comment period and participate in the process. We've got a form on the website. You can also use the email address, voicemail, or written letter. And all that contact information is found on the project website, and we'll be posting a link in the chat to the contact information. So with that, for some of you who joined a little bit later, we'd really appreciate it also if everyone were to sign in for the meeting tonight. The sign-in sheet does become part of the public record for this project, but the information is only going to be used to monitor attendance at the public meetings to help with data collection purposes and just to kind of, you know, give us an idea of who's attending. And we will be posting a link in the Google Chat again, or sorry, Zoom Chat again, with a link to the sign-in form. So please take a moment to fill it out while you're waiting for your turn to speak. And finally, as you're following along with the presentation, if you can't see the graphics very clearly, or you're just having some difficulty zooming in, all the graphics and information that you see on Josh's presentation are found on the fact sheets and the scroll plots, or all the detailed EIS technical analysis. Everything that you're seeing on the screen is available on the project website, and we'll be posting a direct link to the section, the Draft EIS section, that has all the related materials for you to refer to tonight. So, thank you. That was a lot I just threw at you. But I really appreciate everybody for letting me walk through the logistical details. And now I'm going to turn it over to Josh to give everyone an overview of the Draft EIS before we get started with the hearing portion. So Josh, all you.
Well, thank you, Bree. That was fantastic and a good recap. So again, thank you. And thank you to everybody that's in attendance, right? It looks like we have 133 attendees online right now, which is fantastic. So thank you to everybody for taking time out of your schedule to come to this meeting. We want to hear the comments. That's why we're having a second one of these. We recognize not everybody could probably attend just a single event last week, so we wanted to provide another opportunity. So let's kind of go over the presentation. If you attended last week or watched the recording, you've seen this before. But again, for consistency purposes, we wanted to give the same presentation. So as you know, we've been at this for, oh, just over three years now. So back in 2018 is when scoping started, and on June 25th, we released the Draft EIS. I'm sure many of you have been, you know, downloading that from the website. You know, there's also a hard copy available at some select locations around the valley. And that June 25th release really started our 70-day comment period. Well, it was a 45-day comment period that we just extended to 70 days, and I'll get into that here at the end. But I want to start off by saying thank you to all of our cooperating agencies, right? So this is the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, the Forest Service, Utah Transit Authority, and Salt Lake Public Utilities. These five agencies actually reviewed the Draft EIS prior to us releasing it and had their specialists look it over to make sure that our analysis was both complete and accurate before we released it. So to those agencies, I want to say thank you, and I am 100% confident we have a better Draft EIS because of your efforts. Also, I'm sure you've heard about this, we released two preferred alternatives in the draft for the preferred or the primary, and also made some recommendation on the sub-alternatives. So I wanted to kind of go through that and focus on those in the presentation. So let's do a quick overview, and we can, so over the course of this project, like I said, we started over three years ago. We've actually evaluated 124 different concepts to solve this purpose in need. And five of these 124 made it through the two-stage screening process, and these were the five that were brought forward and evaluated in the Draft EIS. Oh, I think we got one slide ahead of ourselves. Sorry. Thank you. So really, in identifying these preferred alternatives, we considered an alternative's ability to meet this project purpose and need, but also the alternative's associated resource impact. So, you know, we're talking water quality, air quality, environmental justice, and really about 20 other resources that were analyzed. So this is the only time I'll read from the slide, I promise. But the project's purpose and need is to substantially improve transportation-related safety, reliability, and mobility on SR210 from Fort Union through the town of Alta for all users. So let's look at those three criteria individually, right? Mobility is really that travel time. It's a measure of congestion. So in 2050, it's estimated that travel time from the 7-Eleven at the mouth of Big Cottonwood up through Alta is going to be roughly 80 to 85 minutes, 50 days a year. Currently, Google says about 21 minutes, so we are looking at almost four times the travel time. And 50 days a year and 140-day ski season means pretty much every Saturday, Sunday, holiday, and powder day throughout the year, we are expecting these long travel times. But this project also has a second mobility component, and that is really the weekday afternoon commute that's expected to worsen on Wasatch by 45% in the design year. And we can get into that a little bit when we talk about Wasatch later. And so reliability, moving on to that second part of that goal, is really consistent travel times. And knowing that if it normally takes you 30 minutes to get from your house up to Snowbird or up to Alta, that is going to take you 30 minutes today. And that's just so important in trip planning is that reliability. And safety is a component in everything UDOT does, right? And with this project, it's really related to both avalanche mitigation and trailheads and roadside parking. And these two alternatives are really handled, or the safety component is really handled by the sub-alternatives, right? So it applies to both or all the primary alternatives. So it's really the safety and, or sorry, mobility and reliability that the alternatives solve to a greater or lesser degree. And that's why we've identified two options for consideration to be the preferred. So if we go on to the next slide, you know, we started off with five alternatives. We had the enhanced bus with no widening, the enhanced bus with peak period shoulder lanes, the gondola from the mouth of the canyon. And then, as a result of our comment period last summer on the draft alternatives, we added two more. And that was gondola B, which is the one with the base station from Lakai, but also a cog rail from that same base station area. And in the preferred, we narrowed this down to two alternatives. So if we can go on to the next slide, please. And so it's these two alternatives that, you know, like the enhanced bus really meets the mobility component, or the enhanced bus and peak period lanes really meets the mobility component of the purpose and need the best, while gondola B meets the reliability component of it. So these are the two that are in the Draft EIS. They meet the purpose and need in different ways and have different environmental impacts. So let's just do a quick overview of these two alternatives. So if we can go to the next slide, please. Quick overview, the enhanced bus, again, best overall mobility of the five alternatives. And this is really because it has the best overall travel time. And the reason that it has the best travel time is because of those extra shoulders. The buses running in those shoulders would actually be able to pass general traffic and cars just in the existing lanes. And that's going to be a really good motivator for people who are trying to get up to the skiers or to see buses passing them on the right, right? So it's reduced time, and what great motivation. So, quick facts on this. User seat time from the gravel pit up to Alta would be roughly 36 minutes. But I want to point out that 12 minutes of that is really pulling into the mobility hub, finding a parking spot, grabbing your gear, walking over to the bus platform. So it's really only 24 minutes on the bus. There are two mobility hubs, one at the gravel pit, one in 94th South and Highland. And under this alternative, a bus would depart each mobility hub every five minutes in the peak period with direct service. Meaning, you know, you would board at the gravel pit or 94th and Highland and travel directly to Snowbird or directly to Alta. So no bus stops along Wasatch, no mid-canyon trailhead stops. Alta bus doesn't stop at Snowbird and vice versa. And I think that's important for everybody to recognize, because that really, you know, that direct service is what keeps that travel time so much lower. Capital cost-wise, it does have a capital cost of $510 million and a winter operations and maintenance cost of $11 million a year. So let's go to the next slide where we have some considerations with this. So here you can see kind of an artist's rendition of what the widened road would look like. I thought that was good to include. And like I mentioned before, there's really two factors that attract potential transit riders. And that's one, the speed of the service, and the second one is the frequency of the service. So we already talked about the fact that this has a really great speed of service at 36 minutes. But also that five-minute frequency means, you know, if you get there and you miss the last bus, you probably only have to wait, you know, four minutes for the next bus, which is so much better than waiting 15 minutes or 30 minutes potentially. So it really takes that fear out of it and just makes it much more palatable for potential users. We, I think we all know how many cyclists and pedestrians use this canyon. So when the buses aren't running, this would provide additional buffer and safety for cyclists and pedestrians, because really it would just allow them to travel farther away from the vehicles in the general purpose lanes. The widened shoulders are less visually impactful than the gondola towers. Right? They do have an impact, as you can see from this, and the widening and some cut slopes, but it is less than the gondola towers. But I think it's important to note that widening the road means more asphalt. More asphalt is more impervious surface. And that's an important quality for water, or important factor for water quality impacts. But honestly, also, the wide, the road is just wider now, right? So that's an effect for wildlife habitat. And the thing I really want to point out here is, when I mentioned that 36-minute total travel time or 24 minutes in the bus, this is calculated based on dry pavement, right? Because there's no way to model travel times based on how hard it's snowing, what the wind direction is, what the pavement temperature is, you know. So that, again, this was calculated based on dry pavement. And, you know, like the license plates here say, best snow on earth, right? So we know it snows in Canyon during the winter. And so those travel times may increase when it's snowing, and they likely will. Also, the buses, while there'll be more room for vehicles, including the buses, to maneuver around slide-offs and crashes, there is a potential for delay to the bus service associated with these slide-offs and crashes. So let's look at the gondola and do a quick overview and then think about some considerations there. So again, we looked, gondola B was selected because it meets the project's purpose and need of improving reliability the best. And that's really because it operates independently of SR210 in that aerial alignment. So it avoids those delays we just talked about with slide-offs, crashes, but also snow removal and avalanche mitigation. So travel time on this, it actually varies depending if you park at that, the 1,500 stalls at the base station or at the mobility hub, but it's basically 55 or 59 minutes total, and that does include that 12 minutes I talked about for entering the mobility hub, finding a spot. So, you know, we're really talking 43 minutes on the gondola here. But I think it's important to know, right? I mean, if you're looking at those total times, 36 minutes versus 55 minutes, you know, this is about 50% longer total travel time for the gondola, but it will be a much more consistent travel time. So we expected to take 55, 59 minutes basically all the time. There is still two mobility hubs, although they're a little bit smaller because of those 1,500 stalls of the base station, and that's still at the gravel pit, still at 94th and Highland. Under this alternative, each gondola cabin would hold 35 passengers, and a new cabin would arrive every two minutes. And just for your reference, the UTA buses hold roughly 42 passengers, so 42 passengers in bus, 35 in the gondola cabin, five minutes versus two minutes. Capital cost-wise, the alternative has a capital cost of $592 million and a winter operations maintenance cost of $7.6 million. So the gondola is roughly $82 million more upfront. But that, the yearly O and M cost is $3.4 million per year less for winter service. So if you take that $3.4 million savings over the 30-year life cycle, it basically comes to about the same as that $82 million cost difference. So in the long run, they cost about the same. So let's look at some of the considerations with the gondola. So again, the big reason why this meets the purpose and need is that aerial alignment. It's separate from the roadway. That's its big strength and why it meets the reliability component the best. It does have the second highest construction cost. It does have the highest visual impacts as of the five alternatives. But I think it's important to talk about that a little bit too. You know, it does have lower impacts to the watershed, to the wildlife, and also the climbing boulders than the peak period shoulder lanes and the other alternatives. And that's really because the only ground disturbing activities associated with the gondola would be at the tower locations themselves rather than widening the roadway shoulders for the full length of the canyon. So a couple of things to consider. So let's talk about some of the sub-alternatives and the alternative commonalities here. So we can go to the next slide. There we go. So we'll run through these independently, but we did look at the six options to help the primary alternatives achieve the project goals. So let's hit the first one, which is mobility hubs. Wait for the slide to catch up here. So we talked about these, the gravel pit and 9400 South and Highland were the two locations that were chosen for the mobility hubs. And they're included as part of both of the peak period shoulder lanes and the gondola, and really all five alternatives. I think it's important to note that in the peak period shoulder lane, excuse me, that there would be 1,500 stalls at the gravel pit and 1,000 stalls at 94 South and Highland. And under the gondola B alternative, where there's 1,500 parking spaces at the base station, that would be reduced to 600 at the gravel pit and 494 South and Highland. So the next alternative is Wasatch Boulevard. If we can bring that graphic up. So we did choose the five-lane alternative, because this provides better transportation performance, really for all segments and directions of Wasatch. But we also heard the concerns of the residents, and we feel that implementing a phased approach is the best way. And that would be to build this imbalance lane alternative, or the two lanes, southbound, one lane, northbound first, and then basically preserve that area for the fifth lane as additional buffer between the multi-use path on the east side of the road and the traffic lane. And honestly, I think that's just going to give a better user experience for people on the path by having a little more offset from traffic rather than just a standard park strip. So the next alternative or sub-alternative is, sorry about that, is the snowsheds. So we did choose the snowsheds with realigned road in lieu of the burms alternative. And that's really because we thought the burms alternative had higher impacts, really associated with construction of building those burms. But also just the visual of those burms. So that was the big reason we went with the realigned road option. This does result in roughly 700 additional feet of snowshed, taking the total up to about 3,200 feet. But again, the lesser visual impacts and construction impacts of the burms are why this was chosen as the preferred alternative. Trailhead parking. So for trailhead improvements, sub-alternative, we had three options out there. We did choose to complete the trailhead improvements at four to sink locations. So if you're familiar with what the Forest Service did at the grit mill last summer, think of that, right? We have water quality buffers, hard surface parking stalls to reduce erosion, bathrooms. We have water quality buffers, hard surface parking stalls to reduce erosion, bathrooms. So these four locations would be White Pine, Lisa Falls, the bridge and the Gate Buttrus. And in conjunction of that, we would eliminate roadside parking within a quarter mile of these trailheads. In the end, this actually results in almost exactly the same number of parking stalls being available in the lower canyon. And the reason we wanted to just do that quarter mile is, you know, there's recreation areas that are serviced but don't have designated parking areas. We wanted to make sure they remained available. So no winter parking. This is really talking about above entry one. If we can go to that next slide, please. Perfect. And so you can see what we're really talking about here is that roadside parking between entry one and entry four. And then up by Wildcat. Where people park parallel to the roadway. You know, they're supposed to park one foot inside the white line. I think we've all seen them on or over the white line, which just produces side friction for vehicles. And of course, they're getting out of their cars and become becoming pedestrians and walking in the lanes. It's not safe for them, not safe for motorists. And so the final commonality is tolling. And if you're not familiar, this is a picture of a tolling gantry. So we are going to be implementing tolling or occupancy restrictions for any of the alternatives, right? Of course, fares are anticipated to be subsidized on the buses or the gondola. But this is also a way to disincentivize personal vehicle use. So again, tolling would be in place during those peak periods or roughly fifty days a year in that morning peak timeframe, you know, so three hours a day, give or take in that morning peak. And it is expected to work with the existing express pass system. But also augmented with a license plate reader system. So we can pick up people that drove in from out of state or rental cars to make sure it's equitable to everybody. So public comment period. We are very much in the public comment period that started back on June twenty fifth when we released the date. And we just extended it last week from the original forty five days up to seventy days. So that extension makes the comment period end on September third. And so for those of you that work on holidays, that is the Friday before Labor Day will be the end of the comment period. Just a reminder, comments on the draft are not a vote. Right? You're not voting on an alternative or a subalternative. But this is really an opportunity for the public, but also agencies to provide UDOT and the project team with input regarding whether or you know, what we should be, if we miss something in our environmental analysis, or is there other considerations that we should be looking at in making a final decision? And I think it's important to note that we do need to have a single preferred at the final EIS, right? Although we have two today. At the final EIS and record of decision, we will have a single preferred. Comments, we accept comments through the following channels, right? So you can do, go to our website, you can email us, send us, you know, you can call us and leave a voicemail, a written letter. And of course, your comments today, and that's why we have a court reporter here. Like Bree mentioned. So process moving forward, and this is basically my last slide. You know, so we're in the public comment period. We will respond to all of those comments. And honestly, we expect that we will need to make changes to the draft D I S based on those comments, right? That's why it is a draft D I S with a comment period. Is so we can get this feedback and really get the best document possible. You know, when we're looking at that single preferred at the final EIS, I think it's really important that everybody know we're going to take into consideration how each alternative compares, you know, with their environmental impacts. And the purpose and need, like I said before. But also which one best meets UDOT's mission and responsibilities. And based on the public input considerations that we get from all of the public and the agencies. So time wise, we do expect this, you know, revisions and commenting to basically last through the rest of twenty twenty one. And then hopefully we'll release a final EIS and have a record of decision. Really in the first quarter of twenty twenty two is the most likely timeframe. So that's my presentation. I thank everybody for listening. I hope that wasn't the second time you had to hear it. But now let, I look forward to hearing comments from all of you.
Thanks, Josh. So everybody, thanks for bearing with us and let's get started on the hearing portion. So as I mentioned, we are going to list the first three folks in numbered order. And please raise your hand when your name is called. If your name isn't called, please lower your hand as that'll help our administrators keep an eye on things a little bit better. So right now, these are three speakers who registered to speak. They are in the chat box. They, they initially made a request on July thirteenth. So Matt North. Are you here? Followed by Eric Campbell. And David Berry. So please raise your hand if you recognize your name. And if that is not your name, please lower your hand. Going once. Twice. Our next batch of speakers then, and Matt, David, Eric, if you're listening and we're having difficulty. You are certainly welcome to raise your hand at a later point. We will now put the next batch of speakers in. And that will be Rowan Kay. Rowan, if you're here, please raise your hand. Followed by Christopher Robinson and Ralph Becker and Susie Albertson. So if that is your name, please raise your hand now. Excellent. I don't see Rowan. So let's go with Chris Robinson and Ralph Becker. Tyson, if you could please promote them. Excellent.
Thank you. I'm Chris Rob. Are we ready?
Yeah, we are ready, Chris. Thank you.
I'm here as the Chair of the Central Wasatch Commission. And with me is Executive Director Ralph Becker. We represent seven towns and cities in and around the central Wasatch, as well as two counties, Summit and Salt Lake. And UTA is an ex officio member. We have spent the last couple of years working hard to try to analyze a mountain transportation system for the central Wasatch and have have been unable to come up with consensus on a mode, but on the seventh of June, we arrived at consensus on a, what we call a pillars document. And the pillars consist of six points. Visitor, visitor use capacity, watershed protection, traffic demand management, parking and bus or other transit strategies, integration into the broader regional transportation network. Year round transit service and long term protection of critical areas through federal legislation. And these pillars can be found at c w c dot utah dot gov under transportation on our website. I wanted to briefly discuss those. The first one on visitor use. The concern is a risk of overuse that some of these modes could result in a lot more people visiting the canyon, which could have negative environmental safety, water resource and visitor use consequences. And so whichever mode it should, is chosen, we think that appropriate visitor use strategies should be included in the management plans. Then the next one is watershed protection. We know that four hundred and fifty thousand Salt Lake County and other residents, you depend on this for water and watershed. And it's probably among our, our members, the single most important one. And strategies should be used to mitigate and minimize impact on that. The traffic demand management and parking of bus and other transit strategies, what we mean by that is both the canyon, both the roadways leading to the canyons, as well as the canyons themselves should have strategies employed using bus and parking and transit to, to provide also access to dispersed locations. I'm moving fast because I can see the clicker. Integration into the broader regional transportation network. It's one thing to just look at the roadways, the road, Little Cottonwood Canyon and from the gravel pit, the mouth of Big. But we think attention to the valley wide transit should be important. And under year round transit service, what we mean by that is basically that there should be transit service to other areas in the, within the canyon. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, we think that coupled with the transit chosen or the mode chosen, there should be federal protections like the the Central Wasatch National Conservation and Recreation Area Act to provide appropriate land protections and natural resource protection. So Josh, I see my time is up. You've heard all of this before. You can get the full text of our pillars. Unfortunately, we weren't able to come to consensus on a mode, but we're going to continue as a commission to study what happens and to try to seek consensus. Our members may have differing opinions on modes and things, but this is as far as we can go. And I'm sorry that I didn't have any time for Ralph. That was a quick three minutes. Unless Ralph has a part in comment.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate the time and the effort. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Chris. Susie Albertson will be our next speaker. And for those of you following along in the chat, I have also posted the next three to follow Susie. Susie, are you ready to speak?
I am ready.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I've been working on the traffic congestion for I think it's been seven, eight years now. And I live right on two ten in Little Cottonwood Canyon. So I'm aware daily of what the problems are. And I first started analyzing, I started speaking to the police officers. And they said that the problem is most of the ski resort employees are driving by themselves in their car. So for years and years, I kept recommending that the ski resorts get their people in buses. Or at least carpooling. Since they've done that, the traffic problems at this canyon have now been reduced to only ten, ten days a year for a few hours. It used to be twenty days a year for a few hours. So cut it in half just by, just by them starting to carpool. If, if most of those employees were in buses, we wouldn't need to be destroying the canyon with a four lane highway. I mean, that's outrageous. And we all know that once, once we start expanding roads, that never ends. And I'm not thrilled with the gondola either, but other two, it's, it's better than the road expansion of a highway. And it's interesting that it's just referred to with these benign, you know, it's a buffer lane or something instead of what it is. It's a four lane highway. I think with the tolling, the snowsheds, and if this, most of the ski resort employees got in buses, that this would eliminate most of the problem. And especially in avalanche days, because they are called at five in the morning and told to line up in the canyon. And so that is the ski traffic on those days. And no one has ever been able to argue against that because it's the truth. And once those things are solved, those things are taken care of first, then we can go look at something. You know, maybe a gondola or something else later on down the road. But these other problem, these other things, the tolling, the resort employees in buses is, and the snowsheds will help eliminate a lot of it. Like I said, this problem is only ten days a year for a few hours. We shouldn't destroy the canyon for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. The next three speakers, and I apologize in advance if I totally butcher your name. Andrew Thaler, Mike Cras and Meredith Spackman. So Andrew, Mike and Meredith, please raise your hands so we can identify you and get you speaking. Last call for Andrew, Mike and Meredith. We will come back to you, but we'll move on to the next group of speakers. That will be Delacy Healy, Patrick Shea and Gavin Gustafson. Delacy, Patrick and Gavin, please raise your hands. All right. It looks like we don't have Delacy. So let's move on to Patrick Shea, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to make my observations. I have five. We need to look at the future, not be stranded by the past and the five financial avenues and favors that seem to have dictated much of the road building in Utah. Number two, it is imperative that there be a comment period after the final EIS and before the rod. Having worked on many EISs, both as a government agency and as a private individual. I find it highly unusual on a half a billion dollar project that there is no period for comments after the final E I E I S. If you look at the dollars, the shows, the snowsheds are eighty six million dollars. That will give you four to five more days a year without problems. The road alignment of a hundred and eighty three million dollars does not make sense when most of the highway now, it is SR two ten, is three lanes. Those areas where it narrows down to two lanes could have a semaphore both going up and coming down two hundred, a hundred yards before, when a bus arrived there, the semaphore would go down. The bus would merge into the traffic. And as soon as it was three lanes again, the bus would exit onto the third lane for buses. We need to start immediately tolling. And it is important not to have that money siphoned off to things outside the canyon. But as within Mill Creek and the tolling there, it should be kept in the canyon for the benefit of maintaining the canyon, its environment and its ecosystem. The gondola, in my judgment, is simply a Trojan horse for an interconnect. I would imagine that if UDOT comes up with the train or the gondola as their alternative choice, that within a few years, there'll be a clamoring both by the mayor of Brighton and by the legislative individuals who are going to profit from the Lakai location of the gondola. To say, hey, let's just move it on to Brighton and on to Park City. And then even with climate change, we'll still have plenty of areas to ski in. So I just hope that we would not spend three hundred and sixty eight million dollars when for a hundred and forty two dollars, we could make the necessary change to avoid the congestion and keep the ecosystem and the watershed in very good shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Gavin Gustafson, last call. All right. We can come back to you. The next group of speakers will be Adam Loomis, Leo Bolitsky and Rob Reinfort. I don't see an Adam, so we will be going on to Leo, please. I don't see an Adam, so we will be going on to Leo, please. And Leo, let us know when you're ready to speak.
Hello?
Hello, Leo?
Yes.
Okay, great. You're up.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Sorry, some technical issues. Thank you for this opportunity to express my opinion. Thank you, Josh, for the hard work in selecting those final finalists. However, I'm still seeing there are a few items that were missing specifically to the system flexibility, end of life liquidation for each, for, for the fine, for, for each of the system and exist, experience risks with each of the systems. So there are two types of mistakes that could be, could happen with such complex projects. Some of them are reversible, some of them are irreversible. In my opinion, gondola could be the huge irreversible mistake that could happen with, with our canyon, which will permanently turn the canyon into the amusement park. And again, this is a, that, that will be the permanent, permanent catastrophe. It was a very, I was surprised to see that even, even gondola was actually went, went, went into the finalist, in, into the list of finalists. Gondola is technically fixed structure. I hope everyone understands this. It cannot be, it, you cannot do much after it's built. Parking structure, any auxiliary businesses, all must revolve around those fixed points of entrance and exits. And you can, you cannot change that after that. Once you spend money with a gondola, there is no, no changes, no upgrades, the capacity is limited, and it would be nearly too impossible to do any changes after it's built. And since it's also unique and custom tailored to this, to, to the specific canyon, there will be no improvement, no, no room for, for the improvement. Since that's, it's a novelty, and I don't think Utah Department of Transportation have enough experience how to deal with, with the cable, with the cable routes rather, rather than bus systems. It's like known probably for decades and how to lay the, the roads. It's, we know how to deal with that hundreds of years. It's also will be with, with a gondola, it will be a long balance, a long period of the system balancing and removing any bugs and quirks. Some, some of them might be serious that can, cannot be, can, can only be discovered after a couple of years of operations, like you can discover that some towers are overloaded, some underloaded, or is some small issues like lines spilling on the roadways and causing any other issues which could be serious in the future. So with the, with the
Thank you, Leo, for your comment. We do need to stay pretty strict to the three minute limit, just to be fair to all participants. But thank you for taking the time to comment.
Yep. Don't do this irreversible mistake.
Thank you, Leo. Last call for Adam Loomis and Rob Reinfort before we go to our next batch of participants. Next up will be Jonathan Balk, Maverick Bolger, and Teresa Heinrich. Please raise your hands if that's your name. Last call for Jonathan Balk or Maverick. We can come back to you, but next up is Teresa Heinrich, please. And Teresa, let us know when you're ready to speak.
Hi, my name's Teresa Heinrich, and I have lived at the mouth of Little Cottonwood Canyon for 25 years. My house is right across the street from the park and ride. I worked at Snowbird for 30 years, and I took the bus most of the time. I feel that I have a grasp on the demographics of the skiers and the snowboarders who use Little Cottonwood Canyon. They are mostly locals. I can look out my front window every day of the week and see the cars in the winter time. Usually there's one person in every car. There are a lot of people who drive up Little Cottonwood Canyon and ski every day. How can UDOT incentivize these people to take the bus? Did UDOT think about sending a survey to all the pass holders at Snowbird and Alta? Ask them if they would ride the gondola every time they go to ski? I don't think the majority of the skiers will take the gondola. First of all, it takes too long. For instance, if they live in Sugar House, they get on the freeway, they inch their way up Wasatch Boulevard in bumper to bumper traffic, park, ride the gondola, how long does that actually take? UDOT said it takes about 59 minutes. Now, what about the tourists? If there's a family of four staying at a downtown hotel, they might think it's a novelty to take the gondola. But if they're on vacation for a week, are they going to take the gondola every day? Probably not. It's too expensive, time consuming, and inconvenient. Which brings up the point, how can the public decide if they really want a gondola when UDOT hasn't really come up with a price? I realize Snowbird said they will subsidize employees and season pass holders when they ride the gondola, but it would be nice if we knew about somewhere how much the ticket would cost. I don't think we need to widen Wasatch Boulevard either. I was at a meeting on July 13th, Butler Middle School, and I listened to all the public comments. One of the comments was from a person who owns the land at the gondola site. He stated that he is preserving the site at Lakai from development. Now, how is building a gondola and a parking garage that accommodates 1,500 cars preserving the site at the development? If that property is developed with homes instead of a gondola, I think that's much better use of the land. We can implement bus travel right away. Lastly, Little Cottonwood Canyon has incredible views everywhere, everywhere you look. It's described as the most striking glacial surroundings in the Wasatch range. Why should we install permanent towers and gondolas and destroy the beauty of the canyon for a few days that is needed? We only have one Little Cottonwood Canyon, let's keep the majestic beauty of it for the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Last call for Jonathan Balk and Maverick Bolger before we move on to the next group of participants. All right. Next group up is Isaac Stewart, Shane Doyle, and Brian Kissmer. And it looks like Isaac's here. Let's start with Isaac first.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thanks for inviting me, for my comments. I wanted to propose an alternative to having a expanded park and ride set at 9400 South and Highland. Some of my and my neighbors' concerns of having an expansion there is that the increased traffic, a couple of years ago, we had a several hundred unit apartment complex installed there that's added to the traffic. We already have a panhandling problem, and I've spoken to the Sandy City Police and Trax, and basically the bus have spreaded the panhandling problem across the valley. And another issue is, is that the $20 to $30 million used to expand that location will only be used during the winter. And lastly, which I think is the biggest issue, is that expanding the 9400 South and Highland location will not serve ski tourists from out of state, as there are no hotels in the area. It's hard to imagine a tourist who pays over $100 for a rental car per day to drive their rental car to the hotel and then drive their rental car to a bus to go up to the canyon. They're just going to drive up the canyon. So again, I think that's the bit, one of the biggest concerns besides my personal, my, my neighbors' concerns of the growth and the impact on traffic there. As an alternative, I'd like to propose a bus hub if you're going to do the bus option at 106 South and State in or around the, the South Town Mall. I have actually spoken to the management at South Town Mall, and they said they'd be more than happy to dialogue with UDOT and the state about their location being part of the solution for this canyon transportation. A couple nice advantages of having a bus station there is that there are 12 hotels in the area. Out of state skiers could take an express UTA bus from Salt Lake Airport to their hotel in the area. They could wake up in the morning, get on a bus that goes straight to the resorts. They can take the bus back to their hotel, walk across the street, and go out to eat and shop. This option allows out of skate skiers not to have to rent a car. They could take a bus, like I said, or an Uber. This option would reduce traffic in not only my neighborhood, but all the other neighborhoods. This option's more environmentally friendly as a result, and less cars, not only in the canyons, but just on our general streets, because again, these out of state tourists could just not have to rent a car. The other big thing is that this station could be dual purpose. It could be used by I-15 commuters during all time, all periods. Whereas that other option at 9400 South and Highland is pretty much going to be used during the winter. And this thing, I mean, I-15 is a huge, is a huge traffic issue, and it's only going to get worse. If you're going to spend a half a billion dollars, you really need to include something just besides solving the canyon issue. Getting it to the out of state skiers, you know, UDOT really needs to find out how many, what percentage of the traffic in the canyon is due to out of state? Because I've read articles in Salt Lake Tribune that were up to 30% of the cars in the ski parking lots are rented.
Isaac, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off, but the three minutes, right? Again, I, I'm sorry, but for fairness to everybody, we do need to keep it at three minutes.
And we will be putting the link in the chat again to the website form. So we do encourage everyone to continue your thoughts absolutely in their entirety, and please submit them through the comment box. Our next speaker will be Brian Kissmer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
This will be quick, sorry. I got a lot here. All right. Hi, my name is Brian Kissmer. I'm a doctoral student studying ecology and computational genomics at Utah State University. I'm here to explain why the proposed gondola project will not effectively reduce traffic to the ski resorts while providing a more economically and ecologically sustainable alternative. So according to the law of induced demand, after the supply of a commodity increases, here being access to local ski resorts, if there is still sufficient demand, then more of that commodity will be consumed overall. In other words, the cars that are removed from the road by the gondola will simply be replaced by more cars because the demand to get into the canyon is sufficiently high that more people will capitalize on the increased capacity. The draft EIS does not account for the increase in demand to drive up the canyon after the perceived increase in roadway capacity following the construction of the gondola, providing that a similar lack of traction enforcement is in place after the gondola installment, traffic will likely return to its original levels due to congestion and ill-prepared drivers. So my proposed alternative is similar to the method used by Zion National Park, which sees over 6 million visitors per year. I'm suggesting the construction of a parking garage at the gravel lot with an all electric bus fleet shuttling skiers to the ski resort without the option of driving up themselves during peak hours. So the Proterra catalyst E2 and all electric channeled bus has been shown to out compete both diesel and EV competitors for various metrics, including maximum hill grade, climb speed, and maintenance costs. It has this world record for the largest single drive in an electric bus per single charge, and has a recharge rate of about six hours. The cost of a single bus is about $750,000, which is higher than that of a diesel bus, which is $500,000. But the maintenance costs for Proterra are, on average, 30% cheaper than the cost of a diesel bus. The average lifetime maintenance cost of an electric bus is 60 cents a mile versus 85 cents a mile for the average diesel bus. The cost of 30 Proterra catalyst E2 buses totals about $22.5 million. The additional charging ports cost about $50,000, each of the total cost of 1.5 million. Total operation and maintenance cost for 30 buses over a lifespan of 250,000 miles or 12 years is approximately 4.5 million. Closing the road to private vehicles during peak hours will remove the apparent necessity to increase the number of lanes within the canyon, cutting down on renovation costs. It will also prevent a handful of ill-prepared drivers from slowing down the entire chain of commuters in the event of inclement weather. The combined efforts of our current bus fleet and the additional electric buses would sufficiently cover the amount of commuters to the resorts, and the reduction of traffic congestion, congestion through closing the road would increase the turnaround rate for buses as they return to the parking area to pick up more passengers. Finally, if the gravel lot does not provide enough parking for drivers that would normally drive themselves during peak hours, high estimates for the construction of a parking garage give a cost of about $28,000 per space, or 14.2 million for a garage and 500 parking spaces. Building a parking garage will reduce the amount of square footage required to house the cars for passengers and remove the necessity for development within the canyon. Between the bus fleet and the parking garage, this liberal estimate would add up to about 42.7 million or 7.21% of the $592 million price tag of the gondola system. If the bus fleet is completely replaced after 12 years, the cost would be about 71.2 million or 11% of the gondola project. Furthermore, this project could be expanded easily or scaled if my estimates are too low to accommodate the amount of commuters without ever coming close to the price of the proposed gondola project. Thank you.
Brian, that was amazing. Thank you for, for getting all that in in three minutes. And like I said, feel free to, to submit that in a detailed written comment as well if you'd like. Um, let's see. Last call for that group, Shane Doyle. I don't see anyone, so the next group would be Ray Dodd, Robert Volker, and Ashley Burr. Ray, Robert, and Ashley, please raise your hands if you're here. All right, we will go to the next batch. We have Lexi Hogan, Sonya Campana, and Nathan Perry. Please raise your hands if you are here. All right, we will come back to you. And let's pace the next group in. We have got Elizabeth King, Jared Draper, and Evan Tobin. Please raise your hands, Elizabeth, Jared, and Evan. All right. We will come back to you. The next group is Anno Waringa, Christopher Haken, and Zane Callahan. Let's go with Christopher Haken, please. Oh, oh, sorry. Looks like Anno's hand was just up. I was just kidding. Let's go to Anno as he was first on the list.
All right. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My computer is about ready to die. This is perfect timing. Thank you very much. I'm Anno Waringa. I'm, I spent 44 years in Little Cottonwood Canyon working for the Alta Ski Lift Company. And I'm here today representing the Lightner-Poma Lift Company out of Grand Junction, Colorado. Lightner-Poma builds gondolas all over the world and works with cities all over the world that use gondolas and airspace to help solve traffic problems when they run out of space on the ground. So we obviously think the gondola is a great choice. Josh did a great job of laying out the pros and cons of both, and there's pros and cons to both these alternatives. We're responding to what UDOT asked to give comment on, based on their purpose and need for improving reliability, mobility, and safety. Gondola B uses airspace that has distinct advantages of adding variety to the modes that UDOT uses and to using a space that isn't impacted by snow. You know, maybe enough snow on some day, but realistically isn't affected by snow. And as we know, snow and road conditions in Little Cottonwood Canyon is a huge thing. Gondola wouldn't interfere with UDOT's maintenance or avalanche control work. And gondola, again, doesn't have to deal with accumulating snow, which is a huge deal. And a gondola only provides however many people per hour of delivery that UDOT wants it to. It's a very specific capacity designed and built and paid for by UDOT. So very good. It's a very specific capacity designed and built and paid for by UDOT. So, very good. A really important measure is that a gondola had the best safety record of anything by any measure that you can have for providing a safe experience for residents and visitors to go up and down Little Cottonwood Canyon. We will provide the numbers that we think are rock solid about it and the car exceed safety for cars and buses. And that's before you even factor in the reality, the Little Cottonwood Canyon has the highest avalanche hazard index of any highway in North America. And to use a space that doesn't add more lane miles to travel through the avalanche zones is be huge. Beyond that, it'd be a great ride for people to go take a scenic ride up and down the canyon. And a gondola doesn't use more salt as lane miles would for anything else. So congratulations to UDOT. Nice process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ano. Let's go to Christopher Haken, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you for the opportunity. So I, I think this issue really affects me negatively as a taxpayer, a skier, a hiker, a climber and a nature lover. I really think it's irresponsible to spend this much money on a project that's just going to mainly benefit two skiing resorts at the expense of so many others. It's going to harm all of those groups that I mentioned above. And it's just going to encourage more development of the canyon. And we really need to protect the beautiful environment of this canyon and the nature for future generations. It would be a real shame to destroy this canyon. I agree with lots of the negative comments that have been made so far, but I would like to also mention how it will impact negatively the climbing community. In Salt Lake, we have a world-class climbing community, including Olympic athletes. And people come from all around the world to climb here. And you may not know, but Little Cottonwood Canyon is peppered with boulders that have some world famous climbs on them. And several of these will shortly be destroyed in this construction progress. This will be noticed internationally and it has negative effects on us, especially in terms of the outdoor recreation industry. When we act responsibly towards the environment, it gets noticed around the country and in the world. And it does have a negative economic benefit amongst other things. I'll leave at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christopher. We're still looking for a Zane Callahan. And I do see a participant whose Zoom name is Kevin. Would, would you, would you be by any chance Zane? And if not, our next group of speakers will be posted in the chat, that will be Matt Waltheus, Randall Parker and Eric Creel. Matt, Randall or Eric, please raise your hand if you're here. Alright, we will come back to you and move on to our next batch of speakers. That will be Harry Henry Hartzler, Cole Fox and Chris Mitchell. I see we have Henry here. Let's allow Henry to speak, please.
Hello, just wanted to make sure you can hear and see me.
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Excellent. My name is Henry Hartzler. I'm a resident of Midvale. I'm an also active skier and climber in our community as well as a fourth grade teacher at Midvale Elementary. I would first like to just echo the thoughts of the Salt Lake Climbers Alliance. And that the SLCA proposes that before any permanent changes are made to Little Cottonwood Canyon that would forever alter the landscape, a new alternative based on expanded bus service coupled with tolling and other traffic mitigation strategies be analyzed that includes dispersed recreation transit needs. Alternatives that physically and permanently alter Little Cottonwood Canyon should only be considered after less impactful options have been implemented and shown not to be effective. As I stated before, I am a regular user of Little Cottonwood Canyon. After work almost every day on the fall and spring days, I'm up in Little Cottonwood Canyon bouldering. The boulders next to the side of the road are some of, like Christopher said, the most well-known lines from around the world, including first descent by people who have traveled as far as the United Kingdom and other countries. To permanently destroy these problems is destroying climbing history and does not allow for our community to access this for the expense of the ski resorts and the skiing community. Now, as a user of both groups, I do see the benefit to that side. But I would please encourage UDOT to consider the enhanced bus alternative that does not widen the road coupled with tolling, traffic mitigation strategies. And as Brian stated before, a bus service pattern after the use of Zion National Park, which I have referenced as well. These are non-permanent strategies that we can then assess to see what changes we do need to make in the future. But once we destroy these climbs, these boulders, there's no going back. They're gone forever. Future generations cannot use them. I recently saw world champions that were brought in from the World Cup Championships, which we hosted two of in Salt Lake this past, early this summer. And I saw World Cup champions climbing side by side with me on these roadside boulders in Little Cottonwood. To destroy this, we can't take it back. So I again, just want to reiterate, we should try less invasive strategies first that are non-permanent and we can go from there. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Henry. Next up is Cole Fox, please. And while we're transitioning, the speaker with their hand up, Kevin, K-E-V-A-N. Can you please message one of the panelists with your full name so we can reference you to our speaker list? Thank you.
Cool. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Um, so I just wanted to kind of address this. I, I don't think either of these solutions are really gonna fix the problem here. Cause I don't think we're looking at the right problem. I think the problem, you know, it's not that there's too many cars in the canyon at once. And so we've got, you know, theoretically, the entire valley who wants a very finite number of parking spaces. And so before we go and spend, you know, half a billion dollars on trying to, to immediately solve this problem, let's, let's, let's identify what we're actually trying to do here. You know, the gondola, for example, the gondola is just, it's just going to push traffic west of the canyon. Because let's assume that it's, it's got the capacity to move more people up the canyon than even the road was, which I've seen conflicting numbers, yes and no. You know, I don't know that anyone besides tourists and people that think it's like a shiny new toy are going to use it because it's not faster. It's probably not cheaper for the average person to ride. And, you know, depending on who you are, it may or may not be more convenient. And so you gotta go, you gotta go to the mobility hub, wait in line, hop on a bus, take the bus to the, god, the base camp. You know, we've been through that whole thing and I just don't think that's realistic to, you know, assume people are going to do that. And the other thing too, is that I think that there's a lot more to the canyon than just the ski resorts. And we're kind of hastily fixing the ski resorts problem in, at the expense of the rest of the canyon. So with the guy I just spoke before me made a really good point. I think we should try some less impactful options first. You know, maybe a shuttle system or maybe reservations. Snowbird did that last year. And it definitely needed to be fine tuned a bit, but I think reservations could be a huge help. Because if you have a reservation, you know, you've got parking. If you don't have a reservation, all of a sudden the bus becomes very convenient because you know, you're not going to be driving around the parking lots for a half hour trying to, to find a spot. And so I think there's a few, you know, less impactful solutions that are also a lot cheaper that we could try implementing before, you know, throw in the Hill Mary and doing either a gondola or a, you know, widening the canyon road. And I think that in the end, that would be a lot better for all of us. Not just, you know, those that, that use the canyon a lot, but also the people that live at the base or the people that lived on 94th or on Wasatch. Because ultimately, all that traffic is going to get backed up towards those mobility hubs where people are still racing for that finite number of parking spaces. So yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Cole. And our next speaker will be Chris Mitchell. So I'm assuming the Chris in the queue with his hand raised is Chris Mitchell. Well, let's go with Chris, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Chris.
Sorry about that. So, yeah, thanks for your time. Appreciate all the hard work in listening to all of the comments. You know, I definitely appreciate the professionalism, all the angles that, you know, you guys, UDOT and everybody's bringing this, including a lot of the guests. So I'm just going to keep mine real simple. I moved here 16 years ago. My home is right at the mouth of Big Cottonwood. I also go up Little Cottonwood quite a bit. Just the thought of, I mean, let's be honest, it, it, it would turn Little Cottonwood into something that we would see at Lagoon or any other amusement park. I mean, look, this echoes a lot of the sentiment that we've heard. There's room for a lot of, you know, analysis, but this is our state. This is our home. This is our canyon. We all love it. For different reasons, we all love it. The notion of tearing up Little Cottonwood Canyon to install a gondola for solving problems that we haven't tried to solve other ways is to me just unbelievable. I can't even believe that the, the proposition has made it this far, that we wouldn't have tried buses. I love the other speakers talking about the electric bus options. I mean, clearly we need more parking up there. There, clearly the last speaker talking about the parking problems at Snowbird is right. There, there are other things that we need to look at. But at the end of the day, after all is said and done, we really need to preserve this canyon and do everything that we can, exhaust every other alternative before we go in and start, you know, ripping up the canyon and putting a giant Disneyland ride in our canyon. It's just, you know, as you can tell, it's, to be honest, the, the, the prospect of it actually is just even, I'd say it's upsetting to me. It's just the thought of it is, is just ridiculous. So please, let's look at buses. Let's look at additional parking structures. Let's look at everything we can before we go and tear up Little Cottonwood Canyon. Alright, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. And we will be circling back to one of our other speakers who is now able to join us. Elizabeth Eve King, also under the Zoom name Kevin. So let's please promote Kevin.
Hi, can you see me?
No, not yet. We can just still see your screen name, but we can hear you.
Okay, well, you can hear me. I'm going to try and, okay, sorry. Sorry, now I know why everybody was delayed a little in starting. It wasn't their fault. So thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have to agree with everyone who's spoken almost in it. It's, it's, we can't destroy this canyon. It's kind of unbelievable. And it's not just an issue for the residents or skiers. It's a global issue at this point. Over a billion sea creatures died in the last three weeks. And it's not even front page news. All up and down the coast of Canada and the Pacific Northwest, they just cooked in their shells, which of course will affect seabirds. It's a continual environmental chain. And to just keep building bigger roads and bigger parking garages and gondolas is not the answer. We need to combat CO2, not make things that will produce more CO2. I mean, all over there are fires and people are saying, well, when there's really a climate emergency, we'll know. So it's a climate emergency. Also, I'll comment a few things, right, on the buses. Going up the canyon, yeah, but they have to be electric. There's no point in having a lot of CO2 producing buses. I personally, they've already enlarged the, the road right outside my house where I can't go outside my door except in a car. And I've never lived anywhere in the world like that. I've lived in cities all over, always was able to just walk out my door, use a bike, walk. We're building to, to make that so dangerous that nobody will use it. So electric buses, maybe some electric bikes up the canyon for rent in the summer and make it bike friendly. We proposed a few things, a lot of things, including tunneling, including having overpasses that were grown with vines, including medians that were planted with shrubbery, including trees lining the roads. This is shown to absorb CO2. Also provide a bit of a sound barrier and of course mostly just slow down. If you have to, you know, wait five minutes to go skiing, I don't think that's the end of the world. But if we keep pouring all these poisons, it will be the end of the world. Thank you. Well, my time's up. So it's like four seconds.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We appreciate that. Next batch of speakers are Adam Quinn, Daniel Shay Berger and Samantha Morton. Adam, Daniel and Samantha, please raise your hands. And I do see we have a call in number of 801-560-5592. We'll temporarily allow you to talk just to identify yourself so we can check you against our list of registered speakers since your hand's been up for a while.
Can you hear me? I'm 560-5592. My name's Carol Hoben.
Carol, we were looking for your last name earlier. Carol, can you stay on the line? As we've got you a little bit later down on the speaker list.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Excellent. So no Adam, Daniel or Samantha. We will move on to the next batch. We have Mike Beck, Kate Davis and Spencer with no last name. Mike, Kate or Spencer, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. I see Mike. Let's go with Mike Beck, please.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Mike.
Hi, thanks for, for having us and allowing us to, to have this opportunity to speak about this really important issue. I've been a climber. I started in 1986 and I'm now an attorney. But I work with a lot of climbing companies and athletes and so forth. And I know all of them love Little Cottonwood and, and, and what it has in the climbing, it has in there. It's a very historic climbing area and, and has, is also very cutting edge. Some of the Olympians have been doing things up there just in this last year that are, are cutting edge climbs. I was one of the founders of the Salt Lake Climbers Alliance when the LDS church was quarrying in the canyon in 1999. And in listening to Josh speak, I I I felt like the overlying theme was getting people up skiing faster and safer. And while I agree that that's something that's important, it seems like these two alternatives that have been put forward are only really good for Snowbird and Alta and not for many other users in the canyon. Um, and not even for many of the local skiers who I'm sure would like less skiers up the canyon than more skiers up the canyon. The one thing I did that stuck out to me was that the the lower canyon and use in the lower canyon seems to have been barely addressed by these alternatives. There's a lot of use in in lower, in the lower part of Little Cottonwood because it's unique even of the canyons along the Wasatch Front. It's it's the main climbing area in Utah, both historically and currently. And the glacial formation of it and the U shape make it so that there's a recreating area on the base of the canyon that it doesn't exist in some of the river shaped canyons like Big Cottonwood, for example. You can take a trail all the way from the bottom of Little Cottonwood up to the top. And this area down here is really a multi-use area. I climb there hundreds of days a year. You see climbers, hikers, boulders, bikers, people looking at birds, people finding wild mushrooms, plant picking. In addition to the the residents that live down there and the vault owners and employees that work at those vaults for the LDS Church and the other private vault. Both of the alternatives that have been proposed will significantly adversely affect the climbing resources. We don't need a ride in Little Cottonwood. People are going to Little Cottonwood to amuse themselves in nature. And we should promote that because Utah, our biggest, our biggest resource is tourism and it's not just ski tourism. There's year round resources and tourism and recreation resources in Little Cottonwood. The expanded bus service would with the with the expanded roadway would destroy boulders. LDS Church quarrying historical significant remnants from the building of the temple, access to trailheads and
Hey, Mike, I I'm sorry to interrupt. We we are at three minutes, but I do appreciate you taking the time to comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Kate Davis or Spencer, last call. All right, we'll move to our next batch. That is Taylor Lane Money, Chad Horn and Bill James. Taylor, Chad and Bill, please raise your hands if you're here and would like to speak. Looks like we have Bill here, so let's go with Bill James, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Bill, we can hear you. Thanks.
Okay, I know you guys don't know what JPODS are, but you will. In the same way, you'll learn what Hyperloops are is we're going to digitize mobility the same as we digitized communications. And so I'm an infantry veteran and a West Point graduate and we started looking at how we end oil wars back in 1998. And the solution is to combine the 400 ton mile per gallon efficiency of freight railroads with the on-demand service of the internet. So instead of gondolas that are suspended from a cable, JPODS are these little, here's a scale model we have for our STEM programs for students. These are suspended from a guideway and they can switch so that they can go anywhere in a network that would that we need them to go. The primary market would be for Salt Lake City itself to remove traffic out of Salt Lake City. But it is practical to possibly put a JPOD network up the valley or up the canyon without disrupting the current boulder structure of anything. Because these only require a peer about every periodically, and that would have to be worked out with with the climbers so that they get what they want. But the real objective that I have and why I want to talk is if we build these in Salt Lake City, you could start testing what the alternatives are to widening the road. That's it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. All right, last call for Taylor and Chad. All right, we'll go on to the next group. We have Sandra Hock, Jerry Roan and Isaac Lindstrom. Sandra, Jerry and Isaac, if you're here, please raise your hands. It looks like we have Jerry here right now, so let's please go with Jerry Roan.
Hello?
Hello, Jerry.
And I have no picture.
We can hear you pretty well, though. There we go. Now we can see.
Have a picture. All right. Well, along with Bill James, which I know by the way, we, I'm Jerry Roan, President, CEO of TriTrack Motors. And we make a monorail electric car that would be able to go in the canyon without destroying the canyon. The vehicle goes 180 miles an hour and it's it it's dual mode, so it drives on the street and then it converts and goes up on the the guideway. And when it's on the guideway, it's, of course, it's all electric and it's very low power compared to any other electric vehicle, especially electric bus, which has a lot of dead weight. We would be able to do this project for $12 million cost and the 2 million per year in my operating maintenance cost. And which is significantly lower. And but the main thing is the the ride to the end of the track would be four minutes. And so we significantly beat the performance of what is presently called the preferred alternative. So just wanted to let you know that TriTrack's out there would be significantly cheaper. We're doing things around the world. Uh, we also move water, so we'd be able to bring water and sewage back so that the canyon doesn't have to deal with that flow from the people. Of course, there's no salt. We can go in the snow. Uh, we have a triangular guideway, which this is a slice of it. So it's very petite and it kind of hides in the sky. And we could put it down the hill from the highway so that it doesn't make any more scar on the land than the highway that's already there. We could possibly go down the center stripe of the highway and and not take up any more right of way. So we'd be, we would like to talk to you dot about it if they're interested. I'm not sure how they got to the finalists that they ended up with because it sounds like they had a lot of interest in Bill James being one of them. So, um, I I think it would be good to look at more modern alternatives and especially on the bus. Like a bus, a city transit bus uses 4,242 BTUs per passenger mile. We're at 124 BTUs per passenger mile. So that's TriTrack. Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Sandra or Isaac, if you're present, let us know. Otherwise, we'll move on to the next batch. Next group is Dan Barrel, Kyle Daly and Jeff Edwards. Dan, Kyle and Jeff, please raise your hands if you're here. Excellent. I see Dan. Let's start with Dan Barrel, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Sorry, I was just washing my three-year-old's hands. Uh, all right. Well, hey, thank you for the opportunity to take my feedback. I'm a native Utah and, you know, the Wasatch is one of my favorite places on earth. I'm also grateful for the community to come together to work on solutions to address the traffic in the canyons. And really, my big takeaway and what I want to express here tonight is my, you know, adamant opposition to the gondola. And I want to convey my support for the enhanced busing option. As a taxpayer who will be helping to fund the project, it's important that we move forward with the solution that best mitigates the traffic problem. And from my analysis, the gondola will not sufficiently address the traffic problems in the canyon. And the reasons, uh, the problems with the gondola are, you know, really the biggest one, which has already been said, is the travel time. It's going to almost take an hour from the Cottonwood Heights parking lot and will, which will also still involve a bus ride. The gondola will not remove people from cars because people don't want it to have, you know, being, uh, to take so long to get up to the resorts. And, um, and so the transportation wouldn't be convenient enough to incentivize usage. And having two trips just wouldn't result, wouldn't really address the problem. The biggest advantage of the gondola is that it can operate during times of inclement weather, uh, you know, winter storms after avalanches. It's only happens like eight to 12 times a year, which is essentially three, 3% of the days of the year. In addition, the traffic is backed up at Little Cottonwood Canyon. So in that event, the cars wouldn't be able to access the gondola garage. So really, the gondola would still have issues when there is avalanche backup. The buses, uh, you know, the gondolas really don't have any option to serve the trailheads where the buses could be, you know, enabled to do so in the future. And really, uh, a really big concern I have too is that the gondola would ruin the character of Little Cottonwood Canyon for the future and permanently scar the sacred and wild views of the glacial formed canyon. I mean, just seeing the renderings made me just really sad and just like that I could lose something sacred to me. I also have a concern that the ski resorts in Ski Utah are strongly advocating for this approach to create a foundation to extend into Big Cottonwood Canyon and Park City and essentially move forward with the Ski Link opposition that was very Ski Link option that was opposed by the public. And I think a lot of these stakeholders would think of how they can market Utah to outsiders rather than creating the most viable solution for local Utahns. You know, we're talking about spending a half a billion dollars and, uh, you know, we don't want to just exclusively benefit the ski resorts while, um, you know, not considering the access to public lands. Enhanced busing is by far the best solution. Um, you know, we should use electric buses, as has been said, be just significantly faster travel time with much, much more usage. The gondola is, you know, kind of a novelty that people would not want to ride in the summer due to the long travel time. The buses have higher capacity to move people out of cars and would be able to operate out of the singular large hub out of Cottonwood Heights. The buses would be able to be carbon neutral with electric buses. And aside from the 3% of the days of the year, the buses would be the far better option to serve Wasatch recreationalists. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dan. We appreciate that. It looks like Kyle Daly is also here, so let's go with Kyle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Kyle Daly. I am a climber and a skier in Salt Lake City. And I recreate in Little Cottonwood Canyon year round, probably over 200 days a year. Moving forward, I hope we consider the year-round impact of these transportation solutions and how they will affect the visitor experience in Little Cottonwood Canyon. I believe that a gondola will only be a viable transportation solution during the winter season. And it's only going to serve to shuttle more people up to our already overloaded ski resorts. Unless this gondola is running year round with additional stations at popular trailheads, it's just going to remain a vacant eyesore throughout our summer months. Additionally, the solution of widening the road will have a severe impact on the remaining wilderness of Little Cottonwood Canyon and will threaten the existence of as many as 29 climbing boulders, as noted by the Salt Lake Climbers Alliance. I believe that before we make such dramatic alterations to our landscape, less destructive transportation, less destructive, uh, transportation solutions must be explored. Why not increase the bus frequency to every few minutes and require all visitors to ride the bus up the canyon lest they pay a significant toll during the peak travel times? Little Cottonwood Canyon has the opportunity to be a model for mass transit solutions in our growing world. And I think that rather than jump right to the most destructive solutions, let us first attempt to work with what we have. Increase increasing bus service, uh, building snowsheds, adding tolling, et cetera. Let's try to preserve what remains of the wild nature of this special place. Um, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And let's go with Jeff Edwards. And Chad, if you stay on, I saw you from an earlier batch. We'll get to you as well. Thanks.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jeff.
Great, thanks. And I'm trying to turn on my camera also, but I can't quite sort that out here. If I can do that. Great, thank you for, hi, thanks for accommodating me in my visit. I was at Economic Development Corporation for about 15 years and was also a founding board member of UCARE, where we helped, uh, try to bring air quality to the forefront of this discussion in this state. I'm also a lifetime skier in Little Cottonwood Canyon, and so I have a lot of interests in this. Spent a lot of time in Europe and seen how cog trains operate in Europe. And I've been a proponent of that idea as an excellent solution for this site. And I was sorry to see that option didn't make it into the final two choices. However, I believe that the proposed gondola has many of the same advantages of the train without some of the of the environmental impacts as well as the cost. I also served on the original Mountain Accord team that later became the Central Wasatch Commission. And you've heard already today from Chris Robinson and Ralph Becker, who man navigated incredibly difficult chat tasks to get all the different stakeholders together in that, uh, project. I was also the leader of one of the economic, uh, system teams along with Natalie Gawker. And our team made it very clear that issues like congestion and air quality are really at their core about economics. And if they don't get solved, there'll be serious negative impact to our economy, whether that's through poor air quality or the degradation of the quality of life, which impacts one big thing, and that is the acquisition of talent. Talent is the essential natural, the essential ingredient in Utah's success as an econ, as a state. And recruiting and retaining talent in our state is crucial to all of our futures to have a vibrant economy. Places of high value outdoor recreation like Little Cottonwood Canyon are an essential part of that process. Doing nothing is not the right answer and relying on congestion to manage visitation of the canyon is a very poor solution and an just outright, uh, ineffective solution. Before you that makes a decision, however, there needs to be a clear statement of the firm pricing for users. Many people in this, in this meeting today have talked about whether users would use this. And besides the time of transit, cost is certainly a big factor, especially for the families that we want to attract to continue to recreate in the canyon. There also needs to be a tolling operation. And Pat Shea explained that very out of very articulately at the beginning of this, and I'd like to see that implemented right away. And along with Chris Robinson and Ralph Becker, having some kind of a visitor mitigation plan is absolutely essential. Regardless of what option, which option is chosen, as it will help us to avoid loving this beautiful place to death, which is happening already in a terribly uncontrolled way. I encourage, I commend you to offer their lengthy, uh, difficult EIS processor. And I urge them to find the right solution with this, which I happen to think is the gondola solution. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Jeff. And let's circle back to one of our speakers from a previous batch, Chad Horn. Chad, did we lose you? All right, we will get to the next group and circle back to Chad when he rejoins us. Next group of speakers is Jeff Albaker. I'm so sorry if I mispronounced that. Carol. And that's our call in member and Dr. L. Bellnap. So Jeff, Carol and Dr. Bellnap, please raise your hands. All right, we'll get started with Carol.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Carol. Thank you.
Hi, um, my name's Carol. I live on Little Cottonwood Road. I'm not quite one mile west of Wasatch Boulevard. I bought my house in 99. I've been impacted by the traffic ever since I've lived here. I'm not quite one mile west of Wasatch Boulevard. I bought my house in 99. I've been impacted by the traffic ever since I've lived here. Um, the bus, and I, I watched that entire presentation this morning. I want, you know, I did YouTube. Anyway, you put expanded bus services. Um, I can't get across my street half the time just to get out to walk my dog. On heavy snow days, um, I've been prevented getting home from a 12-hour ICU trauma shift because of the cars all the way down to the 7-Eleven. Um, the speed limit here is supposed to be 40. People go over that all the time. So regardless if it's 9400 or Wasatch Boulevard, you do any widening, it's just going to be more cars. They're going to go faster. I don't want to see the canyon destroyed. That's how I would relax after what I had to do at work. And if you widen any of those roads, it's not going to just be buses as it is now. People try to pass buses on that road. That's just give, going to give them more room. Um, trying to ride my bike north on Wasatch is dangerous. Um, because the speed limit's so high, you make it wider, it's going to be even worse. Um, I just think it's sad that they want to put a gondola, which I used to think was a pretty good idea. Till I started seeing how it would change the landscape and this canyon is just gorgeous and I would like to see it that, stay that way. And, you know, I can't really say much more than what everybody else has already said already. So thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have Jeff or Dr. Belnap? All right, and it looks like we'll circle back to a pre, a previous speaker, um, that we missed earlier, and that would be Matt Waltheus.
Oh, how do I start commenting? Hi, are we good to go?
Yeah, we can hear you, Matt.
Awesome. Yeah, uh, I got three minutes. Uh, first off, I know Josh personally, and I am eased at mind to know he's on this project. He puts in more miles in the Wasatch backcountry in a day than I put in an entire season. So it's really comforting to know that somebody that cares about the Wasatch is on this project. It's not just an import from California, jumping in to put a highway in or whatever. I'm not a huge fan of the bus option due to previous comments. I've heard about, uh, Provo Canyon and how that project got completely changed and, uh, it turned it into a highway basically, and there were big impacts to the environment on that one. Um, and also I think people are going to be cutting in the bus lane. It's just going to turn Little Cottonwood into a crazy highway. I love the tram idea. Uh, the, the video on YouTube is beautiful. It's really cool. Um, but how, how, I mean, on a bluebird day it works, right? But like on a 70 mile an hour wind day, it's not going to run. And those are the big days we need it to run. And then same thing if like there's an avalanche over the road and Snowbird is interlaged, nobody's going up there either. Um, so the tram is an awesome idea. I think it's gorgeous. The ride up will be fun, but how practical is it? And then who also benefits from it? It's the resorts. Like everybody taking the tram wants lift service. So 99.99% of the benefit of the tram is going to come to the lift to Snowbird and Alta. Snowbird and Alta should find front 99.9% of the bill. And that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Chad Horn, I did see that you dropped off when we tried to allow you to speak before. If you'll raise your hand again, uh, we'll try to get you back into the rotation. I think we lost Chad. We'll circle back, but we'll get to the next group of commenters. And we have Brad Rickards, Vicky Adams, and Justin Time. Brad, Vicky, and Justin, please raise your hands if you're here. All right, we'll move on to the next group. Corey Makin, Trevor Olich, and Katie. Corey, Trevor, and Katie. Are you available? All right. We will get into the next group then. Lila Rosenfeld, Stuart Willock, and Michael Hargrove. And it looks like we have Lila here. Let's go with Lila Rosenfeld, please.
Video start audio. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Cool. Hi, I'm Lila Rosenfield. I'm a graduate with a degree in urban and regional studies from Cornell University. I currently work for a mountain resort planning firm, although I am here on my own behalf and not on behalf of my employer or any clients. I want to start by thanking UDOT, the Utah, uh, the United States Forest Service and all the other organizations who helped work on the CIS. I know from experience how much work goes into these projects and it's honestly just a really remarkable job you all have done. I want to start by saying that I think we all can agree that the canyons need to change. The traffic is bad. It's a problem. However, how canyons need to change is what's known in planning literature, uh, sometimes as a wicked problem. That is, what solutions we want determine the problem we identify and the questions we ask. Um, it, it's clear from the EIS that the, you don't want to ensure that many drivers are still able to take their cars up the canyon. I.e. to take the minimum number of people up the canyon on transit while still relieving traffic. This solution led to the determination of the problem or the scope, mobility and reliability versus other problems that might be identified, such as limiting the number of people, which is what many of the people who talked about, um, who talked about, uh, you know, worried about induced demand or protecting the climate and maximizing the reduction in car traffic, which is what I personally care about. The determination of the solutions that led to the problem identified as apparent in section 25 of the 2020 draft EIS frequently asked questions. Uh, ultimately, climate change will lead to catastrophic shifts, and that's not even to begin with the problem of smog in the Salt Lake Valley. It would be better if we identified a way to eliminate cars from Little Cottonwood Canyon entirely. It is clear through the study, see section 28 of the 2020 draft EIS fact, that the so-called Zion option, whichever other people have brought up, is infeasible with buses due to turnaround time. We are fortunate to deceive, to see, despite the decision to deprioritize consideration of car traffic, climate change and the inherent problems of cars, including safety, an alternative that could nevertheless accommodate all or nearly all the traffic that might desire using the canyon. And importantly, could be scaled up far more than the buses. See section 11 of that same draft EIS frequently asked questions. I speak, of course, of the gondola. I support the gondola plan as existing, but would more strongly support a reanalysis of the gondola approach that would consider the possibility of closing the canyon to most personal vehicles, plus a Zion-style local shuttle for all non-resort users. Both the EIS and several commentators have spoken up about the scalability of buses, but buses have a clear cap on how much they can scale up. UTA standards allow a minimum of roughly five minutes headway. While this minimum capital outlay of gondola is far higher, the cap on gondola capacity, that is the capacity to which, uh, the gondola can scale is also far higher. Again, given the scope of the project is written, I support the gondola, but more importantly, given the expanded scope of the incorporate, incorporates demand to minimize the hazardous air pollutants of threat to human safety inherent to both in current combustion engine and electric car motor vehicles, the gondola is clearly the only way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. That was an impressive feat, all in one breath. Um, let's, do we have Stuart Willock and Michael Hargrove? Stuart Willock is here. Let's go with Stuart, please.
Hi, thank you. I'd also like to thank everybody who's been involved in this big task. And I appreciate everybody's comments on all sides. I'd like to make two quick points. One is options like the gondola or railway or one of the other new high-tech things that people brought up. Do improve access for lower canyon users, backcountry skiers, hikers, climbers, by taking cars off the road. To access to all the trailheads is easier. The other comment I'd like to make is this is clearly a complex problem. Complex problems usually need complex or multimodal solutions. It's probably not one solution that's gonna, or one option that's going to fix it. You probably need to consider more than one. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Michael Hargrove, last call. All right, our next group, Marvin L., Scott Klepper, and Nick Gibbs. Marvin, Scott, and Nick, please raise your hands. And it looks like Marvin's here, so let's go with Marvin first, please.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, so I'm Marvin Larica. I'm from out of state who travels to ski and uses the tracks and bucks to get up to the cottonwoods. Um, I also ski in other resorts in the West and I primarily come to Salt Lake because of the closeness the resorts have to the valley and not having to rent a car. Um, it's also more affordable than staying next to a resort. My initial thoughts were that the gondola would be the most appealing option for me since, uh, so that I could count on not having my trips disrupted by, uh, avalanches and road closures. However, after listening to the presentation last week and tonight, I see that most residents are opposed to the gondola, uh, leaving the, uh, bus as the most acceptable, acceptable option. I'm not sure why UDOT did not study how much traffic and time could be alleviated if traffic were limited to only the buses, uh, along with some of the exceptions for canyon residents or emergency vehicles, et cetera, um, to go up. Feel like that would have fewer cars and fewer accidents from cars that have inadequate tires, uh, during, uh, bad conditions. Feel like this could be tested like as soon as the next ski season, at least for, uh, weekends or holidays and powder days. You could even limit the restriction, uh, to just, uh, mornings. Then you'd have, then you could have additional buses that could be added during these times, uh, when you have a bus usage that's lower elsewhere in the city. Uh, from my experience, the bus is very popular based on how crowded it gets after picking up people at the park and rides near the canyon mouth. Last week, last week, some people complained about, uh, building a parking garage for the gondola. But someone mentioned that there is vacant, a vacant shopco, uh, along 9400 South where the mobility hub would be. Utilizing shopping centers as hubs could have some appeal to businesses such as, uh, ski shops and restaurants. Uh, adding additional routes from, uh, similar starting points, uh, earlier someone mentioned the mall. Um, that could also increase bus usage. Uh, this way buses from the, the ones that I ride are from, uh, Sandy and Midvale stations. They could continue on to the resorts without having to stop at park and rides near the canyon mouth. Packing the buses so full of people standing and equipment all over the place. If adding, uh, the snowsheds would significantly reduce road closures, I believe the bus option with limited private vehicle traffic would be the best option to try right now before considering other larger capital projects. Snowsheds are used in many other scenic places, including national parks, and hopefully could be done with minimal impact. As a non-local, I can't speak to the traffic on Wasatch Boulevard, but I suggested there'd be some compromise between the residents and UDOT, considering that there needs to be a solution to the overall traffic challenges, uh, up to the mountains. Hopefully with implementing bus-only traffic that would alleviate much of the congestion at the canyon mouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. Next up is Scott Klepper.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Scott.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be quick. Um, I, uh, I worked with UDOT, uh, about four to five years ago to, uh, take an existing crosswalk across Interstate 900 East where traffic is posted at 40, 45 and regularly does 60. And, uh, to spend a hundred thousand dollars to get flashing blinkers took two years. So like other people, I am blown away that out of 124, that in two years, 124 options were whittled down to the two that we now have. Uh, I think both fail in multiple ways, especially the gondola. But widening big cottonwood, widening, uh, Wasatch is not an alternative. It's just going to lead to increased traffic. The answer, and I go back to what, uh, Lila said, uh, the answer is in how you view the problem. It seems that you are trying to jam more traffic into a limited resource canyon. And that in and of itself is the wrong way to view the problem. Resource management is the key here. In the EIS, less than, I think it was 1.89, if memory serves, people per car. I'm in the canyon for two decades now. Every weekend, 52 weeks a year, we carpool every single time, uh, we go up the canyon, whether it's big or little. Uh, and, uh, except for during the pandemic, uh, we're back to carpooling. Uh, the no friends on a powder day attitude is the problem. And this is for two private for-profit businesses. There's been no mention of what they're contributing to the kitty here. There's three ways to grow a business. Cut costs, which is a short-term limited solution. You'd have to grow your marketplace or you have to raise your prices. And that's the problem. The problem is the traffic in the canyon and the cost of skiing has come down due to the passes. When I moved here 23 years ago, break even was 23 ski days a year. More or more meant you bought a pass. Now it's six to eight. So naturally, everybody comes up the canyon, especially on those powder days. They don't ski from nine to four like we used to to get our money's worth. And that's the problem. The resorts need to raise prices or, and not be allowed to take control of the canyon. Because as we've heard from other speakers, there are plenty of other non-resort users in the canyon that will be harmed by both of these solutions. Um, and I, I just am, I'm flabbergasted that UDOT was not able to come up with better solutions of 124 to the two that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Nick Gibbs, are you here? And I do see a speaker named Michelle Holt. With the hand raised and Nick, if that's you using someone else's computer, please message one of the panelists so we can get you in the queue. For the meantime, the next group of speakers will be Steve Pruitt. And John, I really apologize, but John Miletchnig and Andy Aggerty, also sorry, Andy. So are Steve, John, or Andy here? It looks like we have John. Let's go with John, please. John, are you able to take yourself off mute?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. Um, thanks, everybody for putting all this together. Much appreciated. My, a bit of my background, I've worked in, um, the snow sports industry and recreation my, my whole adult life. From a ski patrol or in the Wasatch here to, um, uh, an avalanche forecaster working internationally in New Zealand to, um, owning a local guide service, um, as of current. And, um, to me, you know, well, first I feel like I have, um, you know, uh, an idea of what good skiing is for one, and I know that we're losing a resource. what good skiing is for one, and I know that we're losing a resource due to overcrowding. And this has been addressed, but you know, I don't know that you know, has seemingly noting the problem, we're trying to increase capacity, right? And this is what skiers have done over the years around here, adding high-speed chairlifts, all that, all it does is sacrifice the product. And potentially at some point, there's a tipping point where it compromises safety, et cetera. So the question is, at what point is that tipping point happening? Right? Like this is, this can't go on indefinitely. We increase our capacity, then at some point, you know, if we fill all that new capacity up, then the problem just perpetuates. And now we have even more people. So I think finding a way to limit capacity is critical. And you know, I want to be up there as much as anybody, but we've got to address that. And I understand it's complicated. We have businesses trying to make, make ends meet, et cetera. But solutions like the gondola are force-feeding customers to two particular entities, which seems very skewed that the general population should be even paying for that, let alone it's compromising everybody else's experience in the canyon. So where are we at? Right? I think that we need to take a big step back and put it back to square one. And we need to limit capacity and find a way to do it. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, John. And we'll go with Steve Pruitt next. Steve, I see that you have two hands raised. Could you lower the one that you don't want to speak with? Otherwise, we're just going to guess. All right, thank you. Steve, we're having some issues getting you in. Please stay on the line and we'll try to work through that. And next up is Andy Aggerty.
Okay, am I live? Can you hear me?
Yes, you are. Thanks.
I just have a couple of comments or a couple of questions really concerning the EIS. And one of them is, and it might've been addressed, I've been kind of in and out of the room, but the Salt Lake Climbers Alliance did an analysis to say that Josh made the point that the gondola would perhaps not affect the boulders. Although the Salt Lake Climber, Climbers Alliance has come up with a statement saying that it will actually impact more boulders than the road expansion. And so I just kind of like maybe an explanation on that. And I can put that in my comments. I'm going to submit as well. And the other question is that I have or comment, and maybe someone's mentioned it, but it seems like since these passes have been instigated in the last few years, the Icon and the Mountain Collective and the Epic Pass, that's when this whole traffic mess has really exploded. And has that been addressed in the EIS? Because I don't see anything about it, about perhaps the resorts limiting that kind of access. And that's pretty much what I have. I don't have three minutes to talk, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Andy. Steve will give you another try.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, you ready?
Sure are.
Okay, I'm one of the original Glacier Park subdivision residents that will be most impacted by any solutions. And guys like Jeff Edwards and Ralphie Becker and others that will experience no real impact or have and have no idea, should have no input. As most of the input provided comes from people who experience no personal impact other than drive time and others with tinfoil hat solutions. First obligation of government is to do no harm. With exception of leaving things status quo with enhanced bus service, all the other options do harm, most particularly your preferred gondola alternative B lobbied by Niederhauser and Lakai, presumably where the name of the base station originated. Just curious to know if Lakai is paying for the free national advertising this option would bring, as none of their properties being impacted or used for the project. In particular, gondola B is the worst option for a number of reasons that include, except for the status quo option, the proposed changes other than spending a half billion does nothing more than benefit the private, private businesses at the top of the canyon and those lobbying to capitalize on commercial options at the tram terminus. Except for the status quo option, all other options are tattamount to burning down a barn to kill a rat. And that each solution only provides relief for those few days each winter season, less than 3% when the conditions limit vehicular traffic, most of which can be mitigated through snowsheds at the historical slide points. Gondola B forces all tram traffic coming down from south onto Wasatch Boulevard, making Wasatch Boulevard worse than it already is. And forcing this traffic into a left turn at the intersection has no ability to handle such an increase. Gondola B will create significant traffic jams, parking structure at its entry-to-exit point, forcing us to have no alternative into our houses. Gondola B indicates that you will be, have been woefully negligent in your depictions of the visual damage that this option would inflict, having provided no drawings and section depicting the visual blight a 30-story tram, tram tower inflicts on us. You have indicated the gondola B would have no impact on wildlife, yet having lived in the proposed path of the tram for 30 years, I enjoy the daily soaring of eagles and hawks who regularly visit the large trees in my backyard along 210. You have provided no study with no respect to the impact on these birds of prey from the tram towers, cables, cars, movements and noise. I believe there's most, these, that these are the most probably protected under state and federal laws for which this alternative would be in violation. According to 40% of the winter traffic on Wasatch Boulevard in 209, you've provided no other alternates that would address these alternate accesses to the canyon. I'm also aware that UDOT has lost cases in the Utah.
I'm sorry, I, the three minutes, I do appreciate you making comments, taking the time out of your schedule, but we do need to stick to that three-minute rule. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Steve. And we do hope that you'll continue with these detailed thoughts and submit a comment. Alyssa will be putting direct links to the comment form on the website. Thank you. The next group of speakers will be Liz Hay, Blake Quentin and John Picas. So Liz, Blake and John, please raise your hands. I see we have Liz here. Let's go with Liz Hay, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, hi. Hey, thanks for taking my, whatever, my feedback and thanks to everybody else. So my comments are really based on my experience of using the free gondola and Telluride over the course of many years. You know, as some folks know, they have a gondola that links mountain village, so the Upper Skiria Village and town. It is a free gondola, which I think is something that should be in consideration relative to a gondola auction in Little Cottonwood. I would like to say at the outset, I'm anti-change and I think all of the options basically sort of suck. But given my concerns, which is primarily on some level about climate change and also about the integrity of wildlife in the canyon, I feel like the gondola actually is the most ecologically appropriate option. The Telluride gondola is powered by clean energy. They have a bunch of solar panels out, outside of town that provide a lot of the power for that gondola. And so it is a green option for them. And I think our gondola could be a green option for us if it's something that is researched and employed. Additionally, riding that Telluride gondola over the course of 20 years, that the Bluegrass Festival, which is crammed with people at that time, it moves a lot of people really effectively. And while you're on that gondola, you are quietly moving across the landscape in the air above ground. And there are elk, deer, bear, marmots, birds and a whole bunch of other critters there that are relatively undisturbed. I, traveling up both Big and Little Cottonwood, I'm pretty appalled by the amount of wildlife roadkill that happens in those areas. And you know, this is an ongoing problem. I also feel like, you know, having transportation in the air bypasses a lot of the problems that happen with snow. My husband likes to say it only takes one, and that is in reference to accidents in Little Cottonwood that destroy access for everyone. My other thing on the buses is the last time I took a bus on a powder day, I sat in the bus for over two hours and I had to go to the bathroom like you could not believe. And it was a miserable experience and I don't ride the bus on a powder day anymore because of that. That's a small aside, but I think it does represent some of the challenges that bus service can present to people who are trying to get up the canyon with families. The bus can be a hardship when you're standing for two hours. It's not a perfect solution. Nothing is a perfect solution. But in the end, I think the ecological solution is one that requires serious thought. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Liz. And it looks like we have Blake Quentin. Let's go with Blake next, please.
All right, I think it should work now.
We can hear you.
All right. So first, I'm a backcountry skier, a trail runner, a mountain biker, an inbound skier. I, and a hiker with my family. We ride the buses up these canyons multiple times every winter, although this last winter was a bit of a crap show for everyone. I want to first note that this is a resort-caused problem and it doesn't have to be solved. When the Utah Jazz 30 years ago came and said, we want to build a new stadium, they didn't go to the Utah public. The Utah public has never before accepted donations to large corporations. And this is a, we call it a half billion, this is a $1 billion donation to a public corporation. Well, the two of them. This is an optional expense. We do not have to blow our money off. In regards to the EIS specifically, I would like to make sure that we have noted how long the planned ski season is per year over the 50-year project lifetime of these two projects. And that, that ski season is shortened over time. So those expected future paybacks are decreased. Because as is well noted, our climate here is changing rapidly and our number of ski days available are changing rapidly. Regarding these two specific options for me, doing enhanced bus service where we limit private vehicles for several hours per morning, because that's when we have a primary issue. We cover the avalanche paths with an avalanche shed. And then we use switchable lanes for the buses so that in the morning, they can go up quickly and down, they just move in the single lane for traffic. And in the afternoon, they come down quickly and move uphill in the single lane for traffic. Should work. As far as payment, the ski resorts must explicitly say that their tickets will include 100% of the cost of either of these options. There should be no private tickets bought for the gondola specifically. For the bus, at least I can write it to my backcountry destinations and have the option to pay for that. Now, water analysis regarding the destruction of forests. I don't know that that, that really was accomplished within the EIS. It has been known since John Muir that a forest creates water. We have that in a very limited supply in this area. We need to evaluate how much cutting down our forests we are willing to tolerate and how much we are willing to limit our water to have more super wealthy skiers go up the mountains. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Next up will be John Picas. John, I think we can hear you now.
Okay, I'm trying to get my video started, but I can start speaking now. So first off, I would like to thank Josh and Brianna for allowing the public to provide input, input on this. And it's been really great to hear how passionate so many people are about Little Cottonwood. So so many people have shared great thoughts and I just wanted to share a couple of points that I've heard some people mention, but maybe have been overlooked. And so first, I think John Mlechnig covered this one very well, but I think the most important thing to so many people who visit Little Cottonwood is the user experience. And I really do believe that cramming more people up into the canyon is just going to decrease the user experience for everyone. This includes ski resort visitors who are going to see much more crowding at the resorts. It's gonna decrease the experience for lower canyon users and hikers and climbers who might have gondola towers blocking boulders and inhibiting views. So I think this really should be prioritized. And the only solution to this, I think, is a capacity limit on the canyon. Which I think the best options for implementing that would be banning private vehicles and implementing some sort of Zion solution. So another point I wanted to make is that I think right now this traffic is only a problem, maybe between 25 and 35 days of the year. So I think we should not alter the entire nature of the canyon just for a problem that exists on these 25 to 35 days. And perhaps the shuttle system would only have to be implemented on those days. And most of the year, 330 days, things can just stay the way they always have been. And third, I know I'm a rock climber myself. I know Salt Lake City has an extremely passionate rock climbing community. And I think it's pretty devastating to hear about the destruction to the roadside boulders that could occur with either of these options. I really, it pains me to think about some of the boulders that are potentially going to be bulldozed. And I know there are so many people out there who feel a lot more passionate than me about this. And I really think this needs to be strongly considered. It's an amazing cultural resource. There's so much climbing history there. And it, it's, can never be undone. And really, I just urge UDOT to strongly consider this and talk to the public and find a solution that can preserve this because I think it's one of the really, really special things about Little Cottonwood and it's important to so many people who live here. Thanks again.
Thank you, John. Chad Horn, I think I saw you pop back in and you might be gone again. So with that, we have gotten through our speaker queue. We will do one last call. I will call your name off from the folks that did pre-register. And please raise your hand. Oh, Chad's back again. We'll give him a shot to allow him to speak. Nope, we lost him. All right. So last So last call for Matt North, Eric Campbell, David Berry, Rowan Kay, Andrew Thaler, Mike Croz, Meredith Spackman, Delacy Healy, Gavin Gustafson, Adam Loomis, Rob Reinfort, Jonathan Balk, Maverick Bolger, Shane Doyle, Ray Dodd, Robert Volker, Ashley Burr, Lexi Hogan, Sonya Campana, Nathan Perry, Jared Draper, Evan Tobin, Zane Callahan, Randall Parker, Eric Creel, Adam Quinn, Daniel Shaeberger, Samantha Morton, Kate Davis, Spencer, Taylor Lane Money, Sandra Hock, Isaac Lindstrom, Jeff Albucker, Dr. L. Belnap, Brad Richards, Vicky Adams, Justin Time, Corey Makin, Trevor Olch, Katie, Michael Hargrove, or Nick Gibbs. And we do have a speaker whose hand has been raised, Michelle Holt. Um, can we just, if we give you permission to end or permission to speak, can you just give us your name so we can reference you against the other speakers? All right. Um, well, if there are no more speakers, I'm going to turn the time over to Josh to close things out. Actually, I was just kidding. I did want to give you guys a few reminders um, before Josh gets to give us some, some parting thoughts. Um, please don't forget to sign the attendance sheet. Alyssa will drop that in the chat if you didn't. We will be placing a recording of this meeting on the website. And for those of you, I know you had some really terrific thoughts and I do apologize, but we did want to stick to the, the time limit to ensure we could get through our whole list. And it, it turns out we did. Um, and the link to the comment form will also be placed in the chat box. And at least for me helping moderate this, thank you, everybody, for taking your time, just being super respectful of both the team, the process, and each other. So please stay engaged. And Josh, over to you.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what you just said, honestly. Thank you to everybody for taking the time to review the document. Um, showing up tonight, providing comment, all the written comments we've gotten to date. It's clear there is just a ton of passion for this place that's so special to so many people. And so please submit your comments, take the time to review the document. And thank you for all your participation in the past, and I hope you continue to participate in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.